Yeah, it's for school boys.
Please do.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of September 5th.
Second.
Discussion? Roll.
Hambley.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes. Did you want to do the ones from the public meeting?
Oh, yeah, I meant that also include the public meeting as well as the meeting.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, I should have.
That was what I believed I was seconding.
Okay.
Yeah.
We're all good then?
Okay.
All right. Okay, so do we have any public comment regarding any pending resolutions today? If not, we will move on to resolutions. First up, we have County Engineer, and we have Dan here.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
I forgot my glasses, so if I mess this up, please let me know. I have two resolutions for your consideration. The first resolution is approving the final plat for the Highlands of Sharon subdivision, Phase One. And the second is approving the annual assessments for the Highland of Sharon subdivision, Phase One.
Move to approve both resolutions.
Second.
Discussion? Roll. Hambley.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Jeremy Sinko, our sanitary engineer.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Three resolutions for consideration today. The first is authorizing the sanitary engineer to apply for 2024 grant monies available for the replacement slash repair of failing septic systems through the Ohio EPA Water Pollution Control Loan Funds. The second is authorizing change order one for the elevated storage tanks and lime silo rehabilitation project. And the third is authorizing the president of the Board of the County Commissioners to submit application and execute contracts to the Ohio Public Works Commission for Issue One Funding.
Move to approve the three resolutions.
Second.
Discussion? Roll.
Hambley.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes. Next up, we have Debbie Kylie from Job and Family Services. Put planning on board, she's not here yet.
Yeah, I wasn't ready, Denise was.
Yeah, she's not here yet.
Four resolutions for your consideration this morning. The first is a renewal agreement between Job and Family Services and the Office for Older Adults. The second is authorizing a contract with the Children's Center of Medina County for visits at the Children's Center for Job and Family Services. The next one is authorizing an MOU between Job and Family Services and Alternative Paths. And lastly, providing 40 contract services with Maximus for Job and Family Services and the Child Support Division.
Move to approve the four resolutions.
Second.
Discussion? Roll.
Hambley.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes, thank you, Debbie.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Holly Murin, our Human Resources Director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
On our personal changes resolution today, we have one promotion in sanitary, five rate increases, two in sanitary, two in Job and Family Services, and one in maintenance, one change in position control number in maintenance, one return from leave in sanitary, and one retirement in sanitary. Second resolution is amending the table of organization for the Medina County Solid Waste District.
Move to approve the both resolutions.
Second.
Discussion? Roll.
Hambley.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. Next up, we have Brett Thomas, our Finance Director.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I have 11 resolutions for your consideration today, as well as, I'm going to steal one of Chris's from the county admin here. Our first resolution is amending appropriations. Our second resolution is transferring appropriations between funds. Our third resolution is expenditure adjustments. These are mostly for the Board of Election to cover grant work from the special election from August. Our fourth resolution is cash transfers. This is just rotating years between, for funds. Our fifth resolution is the acceptance of the onset grant for the Sheriff's Department. Our sixth resolution is a memorandum of understanding between the sheriff and Northside Christian Academy. They have requested a school resource officer, and we have an agreement for how much those services will cost for them. Our seventh resolution is the acceptance of the ARPA Plan's Case Management System Upgrade Grant for the Probate and Juvenile Court. The ARPA grant has offered to pay $16,250 towards the court's case management system. Our eighth resolution is expenses for the county engineer for seminars. Our ninth resolution is expenses for other county officials. There's one out of state for the International Conference of Police Chaplains in Pennsylvania. Our 10th resolution is our weekly bills in the amount of $1,119,691.22. As always, copies of the bills are included at the auditor's office for anyone's perusal. The 11th resolution that we have is an amendment to a prior grant. The Medina Municipal Court was given a little bit more money for its Community Corrections Grant, increase of $20,348. And our amendment that I'm taking from Chris, because it's kind of the same thing, we have a change to the Community Corrections Grant for the Adult Probation Department, and that is a small decrease in funding.
Move to approve the 12 resolutions.
Second.
Discussion? Roll.
Hambley.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes, thank you, Brett.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Next up, we have Chris Jacob, County Administrator.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Denise Tested asked that I present her resolution, so, which is a request to adopt the Citizen Participation Plan for the County of Medina. This has to do with our block grant program. And there was a copy of the plan attached as Exhibit A to resolution. And then two resolutions also for my office. The first is authorizing an architectural services agreement for design and engineering services for the expansion and renovation of the Medina County Veteran Services Building. This agreement is with Envelope Consulting Services in the amount of $118,000 to be paid for by Veteran Services Office. And the second and final resolution for my agenda is approving a lease agreement with Medina Metropolitan Housing Authority for office space at the Commissioner's Professional Building. This is a lease agreement that would take effect October 1st, 2023, run for a base lease period of 24 months with a six-month renewal option. The monthly rental amount would be $1,998.33, which is inclusive of utility costs.
Move to approve the three resolutions.
Second.
Discussion? Roll.
Hambley.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have our department updates. First up, we have Greg Brown from County Home.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Starting out with census, we're currently at 39. We have two possible candidates for this month and one ADC. Yes, I see the look in your eyes. So, we did have, one of our residents was hospice. So, there was short-term. Three moved out together. And then, one just decided that it was not for him. He went for an overnight stay, and he never returned. So, that's the way. One day you're up, one day you're down, but we continue one, because that's what we do. Staffing, currently, we're posting on Indeed for a full-time second and third shift aide. Some of the donations that we've received through today, the Free Clinic of Medina County had surplus from a fundraiser and donated a lot of food. We've got a Kiwanis member, John Stein, guess. He grows amazing sweet corn. Yes, he does, okay, so then you know. He's given us several donations. And then I finally have the numbers from the 4H Junior Livestock Auction. We ended up with three pigs, five lambs, 24 chickens, 28 ducks, two geese, and seven turkeys.
It's a partridge in a pear tree.
You know that's what I wanted to say.
Sorry.
No, that's good.
You said it right up there.
It was right there, it was.
Yeah.
Personal thanks to everyone who donated. I know that I put my ones on your desks, and then if anyone hasn't received theirs, they're being mailed out this week. Some of the events for the residents for September, last Friday, some of them went to the 9/11 Memorial. The 4H Pet Pals came over through the weekend, and then this, with weeks to come, Nature Pam's talking about the Mesa Park District. They've got several parks that they go to walk in. Buckeye Woods, River Styx, and Wolf Creek are for this month. And then on the 26th of this month, Medina Kids Care and the Clutters are coming to do a bonfire with music. So, that should be a good end. So, the major projects completed. Maintenance came in and revented our three industrial dryers. Not as hot in the basement, not as, have freer flow of the air there now. Also, Amy created an Amazon wishlist for us that we posted on our Facebook page. Now, people that want to donate can go and specifically see our needs and pick them up through Amazon. And then, other smaller projects, typical clogged toilets, moving beds, yeah, broken windows. Yeah, those kind of things. Then, the last major project for the year is the renovation of the M1, or the A1 men's restroom. Still, it's a bigger project, so it's been taking a little bit longer. But that's all I have pending your questions.
Have we advertised that Amazon wishlist in our newsletter yet?
I have not, but that was.
Yeah, we need to do that.
Great, thank you.
That's a great idea.
It'd be good for as we're coming into the holiday season.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yep, she came up with that idea, thought it was fantastic.
Oh, yeah.
Did you track down the information on the missing goat?
Not yet, I'm looking for it.
If you need help, I'm happy to make a call.
Okay, because that person definitely needs a big thank you.
Yeah, yep. There was a goat donation that we didn't get the information like we needed.
Correct.
Right?
Okay. That's right.
So, if anybody donated a goat to the county home and hasn't heard about it yet, that might be the delay.
Reserve champion, yeah.
Really?
Really?
But we're tracking it down. All right. My commitment right now to help track it down.
Great, all right, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Great, thanks.
Next up, we have Eric Hange from Stone and Water.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Since my last update, our office assisted in 21 technical events, including nine drainage site visits, six pond permit applications, one pond management visit, two erosion issues, a native plant site assessment, and our office investigated two manure pollution complaints. One was found to be invalid, and one was documented as a violation. We are currently working with that landowner to resolve this issue. Education events in the last month include August 19th, a presentation on invasive alternatives took place at Highland Library. August 24th, a presentation on retention ponds and healthy lawns was held at Brunswick Library. August 27th, 81 students in the Junior Leadership Program had a field day at our office. We had several stations discussing prairies, native plants, stormwater, and insects. On August 31st, I held a soil health workshop for OSU Master Gardener Program at Leitha House Park. The Buy Back Program, its tree passout, took place on September 2nd, along with the Park District's Native Plant Festival. All participants in our program were able to pick up a tree of their choice. Want to thank our partners at the Park District for all the hard work on this program, as well as all who participated. In total, 48 participants removed 35-calorie pear, 12 bush honeysuckle, and 18 autumn olive. Our Fall Native Plant Sale Pickup was September 8th and 9th at our office. Upcoming events, there are several dates for the Leave the Leaves presentation, September 14th, 20th, and October 4th. Our Watershed Education Specialist, Abby, is speaking at a teacher workshop for Wadsworth Schools on the 22nd. Fish sale pickup date will be September 28th. Orders are due by the 20th. Our office is assisting with a Sensible Salt Workshop hosted by Neopipe on September 14th. This workshop will help municipalities meet their annual Phase Two training requirements. This isn't a free event, but registration is required. If you have any questions, you could contact our office. Our office will have a table and be assisting at the OSU Ag Day on September 29th. We are in the middle of our supervisor nomination season. If you are 18 years or older, reside in the county, and have a passion for conservation, please consider running for our board this year. Supervisors serve a three-year term and guide our office in the conservation needs for the county. I can be contacted directly with any questions regarding that process. Our September board meeting will take place on the 20th at 1:30 out at Buffalo Creek Retreat in Seville. Is open to the public if anyone is interested. Our meeting will be followed by a tour at Maple Valley Farms to view the recent upgrades to their operation. I look forward to seeing the three of you there. If you have a group municipality or club that is looking for speakers, please reach out to our office for anything conservation-based. Any questions?
Thank you so much, Eric.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Stephen Batson, our Facilities Director.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
How are you guys this morning?
Great.
Good. So, for building maintenance update, our staffing, we've hired Heather as a new office manager. She's in the audience today.
Welcome.
So, she's our new office manager for our department. The maintenance team is completely filled for staffing, so on the maintenance side, we're doing extremely well. Our cleaning department is still our revolving door. Still have people coming in, people going away. We're about three-quarters away staffed, so we're doing pretty decent for an overall standpoint. From a courthouse standpoint, final inspection was done yesterday. We passed, there's a couple of things the fire marshal wants us to take on and make sure that those get corrected, but other than that, we'll be moving DR into those courts as scheduled for the 18th and 19th, so next week. So, we should be out of 69 here by next week.
Super.
The temporary electric and old data that is still attached to the old courthouse will be coming down soon, as soon as Ohio Edison gets scheduled to do that. I do believe they're probably busy with the storms that had come through, so they're probably still doing all of their other things, but they are have it, they do have it scheduled to have it removed. Flagpole lights were delayed, we're still waiting for a response from, I do believe it's Graybar or the group that's supplying the Graybar. They were supposed to ship yesterday, so I'm waiting for confirmation or a confirmation number on that shipment number. We'll just keep our fingers crossed. We are looking at widening the south sidewalk and making some repairs of the west sidewalk of the courthouse area as soon as we kind of realize where we're at with the construction funds and where the balances are from the project itself. So, those few things will be happening. From an overall capital improvements project standpoint, the administration building's north staircase is.
Yeah, looks good.
Complete to a portion. We are doing a final walkthrough, and we have just punch list items that have to get done on that. The engineers' rooftop replacements, those are near completion. We have a few things to wrap up on those. Farm and Soil Administration, their air handling units are expected for delivery for December of this year. The Highway Engineers HVAC system and fire alarm panel have all been replaced. Those are all complete now, so that building is back up to standard, and we've just got control training on it about two weeks ago, so everybody's aware of that. The Human Service Center exterior repair project, the bridge and the south entry, our south entry is complete. I know there was a change order on that for some degraded steel. And then we have some things that are going to be happening with the bridge. The bridge had to be redesigned from steel there, also being a little bit worse than what it was anticipated. But we are, we'll have a change order probably coming for that, coming soon. We're just still in the redesign of that piece. The Office for Older Adults Kitchen started yesterday, so that design has started. I'm sure they're feeling the pains as much as all construction projects do, so we'll keep, try to keep that all squared away for them. The Jail's children boiler VAV upgrade has all been installed. We have had control issues. Gardner has eaten a lot of costs on the control side due to just control problems, but we are still having them. They were out again yesterday working through some of those problems on that building. I know the sheriff has contacted me a few times about heating and cooling problems. We are still working on those, so it's an active problem. Their rooftop replacements are due January of 2024, due to come in. The jail parking lot is completed.
It looks great, I was there last week.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Good.
Looks nice.
Excellent. I know we have some punch list items that we have to go through on that as well. Jobs and Family Services, that rooftop unit is looking at an April 2024. I know we ordered it quite a few weeks ago, so we're still looking at April 2024 for it to come in. And the parking lot there is mostly complete, so thank you to Highway Engineers. Highway Engineers is the one that was driving that entire process, so I think we have an apron to replace. They had placed it, and then a late-day storm came in, and water had ruined their apron placement. So, they're capable of using it, but it needs to be replaced. Juvenile Detention Center rooftop units, that expected delivery for those is December as well, so we'll be looking forward to those. And then, professional building, the schools have moved out. They're completely out now. And then mediation has been moved to 72 Polk Square. So, those are the updates for the buildings. Any questions?
No, everything seems to be going great.
What's the timeline for knowing the, kind of where we are with the budget as far as the sidewalk projects are concerned?
That's a great question. I will be getting with Chris on that. And he'll probably have a more thorough answer for that.
I think that, I think that is, I mean, it's probably the right, seems like the right time to do that. Those, we were walking it last week, and especially on the south side there, it's narrow. And then there's maybe an opportunity to make a connection to that doesn't exist up to the new entrance. Is that part of that project?
It is, I just met with the contractor today to add that into it. The initial thought was just to widen that sidewalk to five and a half feet from the drive line of the courthouse out to Broadway Street, and then fix the two, I think there's two giant patches out front. They're probably 10-foot, 20-feet long of sidewalk to replace those, and then, as we've noticed, traffic coming across that grassy area. So, I met back out there today to put a sidewalk in that brings you over to that parking lot area.
Good, and I think you still do that, you still preserve the courtyard look there. It still, it still will look nice, it'll look better without a patch of dead grass and people walking over it.
Agree. Agree.
I remember we had kind of staggered the HVAC ARPA requests for the buildings. Have you gotten with Chris to the ones that we kind of delayed down the road to make a decision on?
I have reached out to Chris, and I have talked about that. I have reached out to Gardner and who we've been using for all of our equipments. They are getting me rough numbers. I started getting those today to go over with him with the next ARPA funding.
Excellent, because I'm sure we're going to be talking about that in the next couple of months, so I wanted your stuff on the list.
Yeah, we'll have, we'll have those numbers to you. I'll have rough numbers, I think I got the email today coming into here, and then he'll have more accurate numbers here in about two weeks.
Good.
Good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we do have one Commissioner Resolution designating our legal holidays for 2024, and they are as follows. New Year's Day, Luther King Day, President's Day, Memorial Day, Juneteenth, Independence Day, Labor Day, Columbus Day, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving Day, day after Thanksgiving, and Christmas Day. We are adding one additional day for our non-emergency buildings. The courthouse's administration, Human Services Center, Engineering Center, and all other county administrative offices are going to be closed on April 8th for the total solar eclipse. We are, we have made that decision, as are some of the school systems making the same decision, for safety and welfare of our residents, because we do expect potentially a couple hundred thousand extra people in our county that day to, we are one of the prime viewing sites.
Mm-hmm, apparently. Move to approve.
Second.
Roll.
Hambley.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes. Okay, next up, we have public comment. Do we have anybody here for public comments?
Hello, John, if you would state your name and address?
Sure. My name is John Kales, 1809 Ridge Road in Hinckley, Ohio. Okay, so I'm going to apologize to everybody in the audience in advance for all of this. It's not a pleasant thing to talk about, but I am here to talk about Nwaka and their Climate Action Plan. It's kind of extensive, so I'll try to make it as quick as I can. But I did want to go over, I guess, to put into the record what I've seen at some of these meetings.
Okay, make sure you do your highlights, because we do five minutes.
Five minutes, I got it. Perfect. So, like I said, I've attended a few of these meetings. There was one in Brunswick, there was one in the Akron's Medina campus for the University of Akron. So, typically what they do is Nwaka comes in, sometimes they bring their brass with them, sometimes they don't. They have a moderator, that's the Joel Ratner Foundation, Joel Ratner, from the Joel Ratner Foundation. They provide their data through a PowerPoint, which is then followed up by carefully worded questionnaires and surveys with very structured, limited choices. They provide breakout groups that are often overpowered by Nwaka's staff. Nwaka's staff, they, they're on-site, obviously. Some of them, and also people that are reporters, I guess, as it was explained to me, regularly participate in some of the visual polling. So, as we have our Medina County residents there that are trying to give their input, we have people that are either working for the organization or are paid by another entity to be there that are offering their input up, which I found to be, you know, not, not, not on the up and up. They do have a dismissive attitude towards the opinions that don't align with them. And myself personally, I've been stifled a little bit by the moderator when I'm trying to make points that are always fact-based regarding their published plans. Even if he doesn't let me finish, he's always, he always has to concede the fact that none of my points are incorrect. So, he does do that, I'll at least give him credit to that effect. But while I don't have him interrupting me, I did want to bring up a couple of these points that I can get on the record. So, forgive me if anyone's heard these before, but I did want to talk about, so the Climate Action Plan, the basis of the Climate Action Plan was a greenhouse gas analysis that was done by an organization called ICLI, an affiliate of the United Nations, that was funded by the Cleveland Foundation and the Gun Foundation. They both split that, $50,000 apiece for a sum of $100,000 for this analysis. I just think it might be a little bit of a conflict of interest, because, you know, should this analysis and their Climate Action Plan affect transportation and the economy of Medina County, people are going to go where the infrastructure is. And when you look at who sits on the board of these nonprofits, generally, they're developers and some of the most notable land brokers in town, Cuyahoga County specifically. And what's going to happen is, again, like, the people are going to head where the infrastructure exists if it gets too hard to do business out here. They could profit directly from that. One of the gentlemen that was serving as the president at the time that they gave this grant, he's the CEO of a company that sells wind turbines, you know? So, there's just, there's all of these instances that are conflicts of interest. Some of the other points that I was able to ask Grace Galucci about was that, you know, they're very specific about local zoning and how they have no part in local zoning. We know that there's other mechanisms that they can use, whether it's funding or pressure, to achieve what they want. If we just look at Cuyahoga County, we can see that the Cuyahoga County Planning Department is working along with what they call the First Suburbs Consortium. They're working hand and glove to loosen local zoning codes to accommodate their transportation plans. What they want to do is they want to make zoning corridors. And what they, what they want to employ the use of infill development is something that Nwaka pushes. What you do is you would take maybe a lot or something that wasn't developed, you'd knock down three or four houses on a block, and then you'd build high-density transit corridor, you know, housing for transit corridors essentially. So, they can say that they don't really have any effect over local zoning, but you can look into Cuyahoga County and see what the crystal ball holds. One of the other things is, Nwaka was founded, was created in the 60s through a grant from HUD, and that's the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Today HUD is founded, or is headed by a former US Congresswoman, Marsha Fudge, from Cleveland. She's publicly declared the single-family zoning of the suburbs to be racist and made a promise to eliminate it. So, I find it hard to believe that zoning isn't on the table here with everything that we're looking at. One of the other things that I did recently, I wanted to compare and contrast Lakewood's Climate Action Plan. Nwaka says that theirs isn't created yet. Lakewood does have one, it's 148 pages. What they get into is jobs. Jobs is probably the biggest thing that concerns me. They describe getting rid of gasoline engines and converting those to electric vehicles, as well as every appliance in every house and business to 100% electric. So, we would lose a lot of skilled workers in mechanics, HVAC installers, stuff like that. You're going to lose a lot of jobs like that. And then they discuss how the new jobs will be retrofitting everyone's house. That's going to be an unskilled job at that point. And they describe how they think that it needs to go, that diversity and inclusivity and all that stuff needs to take a precedence in who gets these jobs. So it's not going to be a meritocracy anymore. It's going to be handed out as political capital, is the way that I anticipate it. They do discuss repairing setbacks with the Rocky River coming through Lakewood and working along with the Cleveland Metro Parks to, to, I guess, shore, shore those setbacks up to create a buffer by the rivers and whatnot.
It means you wrap it up soon, John.
Okay, I will. So, so to me, that, that speaks about eminent domain and we're going to start infringing on people's public property rights. The net zero, net zero means by 2050, it was a hard time coming up with that. Essentially what it means is whatever emissions that we create are going to have to be equalized or neutralized by carbon offsets. So you can pay for a tree farm somewhere. What it means is we're going to pay more for everything and they're going to be at the ground floor of it to benefit. I believe that that's just a redistribution of wealth is what that is. So that sums it up. I'm going to be heading over to the meeting this morning to, to try and give them another crack, to give me a fair, a fair voice over there. But I appreciate you all listening to me and being as involved as you are and giving me a forum to put this on the record. So thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
Okay, anybody else have any public comment? Okay, next up, we have discussion session and I think we are going to do Skip first for the emergency housing assistance program.
I'll also say good morning Commissioners, Rhonda, Chris, and back there. Pretty straightforward, I sent basically what it comes down to an epistle, I think might have been shared with you guys, but it's the same kind of thing, giving you the information relative to folks being assisted, not just with hotel stays, but also case management services. Great collaboration taking place in the county. The initial allocation from the county commissioners was $10,000. This year, for the first time, the Housing Authority received the emergency food and shelter program funding from FEMA. That funding was $45,000. Housing Authority added $25,000 of its own and, that's funny. And there, there's a small chip grant for the cities of Medina and Brunswick that we administer that also assists people facing various housing crises. Census numbers are pretty strong. Our biggest challenge is finding landlords for some of our rental assistance programs, but we've got a pretty aggressive campaign going on in that front. We're spending about $13,000 a month assisting folks who are facing either imminent risk of homelessness or literal street homelessness. Right now, those are hotel stays. Ideally, a little over a year from now, we'll have a shelter for folks that they can take advantage of. So right now, we are down to about $6,000 according to the board that I looked at this morning. My request to the commissioners is a supplemental allocation of $40,000. That will get us through the end of this calendar year. Happy and entertained questions.
Is, and I, I wasn't here for the prior years when we've, when we've allocated that, but has $10,000 historically been the amount that's allocated to that fund?
A little farther back was about $7,500 years, and that was what the commissioners contributed. Keep in mind, Veteran Services has their own little programming. We have been since 2005 allocated federal and state funding to assist folks with various housing crises. This year, we kind of stepped up when the emergency food and shelter program expanded. That used to be a very small amount of money. Steve will remember way back in the day when he served on that committee. And as the county has grown and economic challenges have, have grown, so has the need.
The short answer, we've done more with more this year from everybody else and you're asking for a little bit more from this office to kind of bridge the gap for the rest of the year?
Yes.
And I think, just, sorry, but just kind of looking through the numbers, I appreciate you compiling all that.
Yeah, it's a lot, I know.
From an, from an ROI of the initial $10,000 investment. I know it's been more than just the commissioners' $10,000 that's gone into it, but I see a very strong, very positive ROI on that, so I just wanted to mention that.
So the, the jump for an additional 40 is significant percentage-wise.
Of course.
So are you saying that this is just for this year because as soon as the shelter is ready, that number should be mitigated now?
Oh, yes, in terms of stays outside of the shelter. Operating costs for the shelter, we're still working with the state on what that level of funding will be. And the Housing Authority, of course, is going to administer this itself. So this request, this supplemental request will get us through the end of this calendar year. Keep in mind though, all of calendar year '24 is when we'll be creating a shelter, facilitating its construction.
I think too, you see the pattern, actually, there's been a lot of various pots of money and the emphasis over the last decade or two with the housing network is try to coordinate it better. Streamline, we had issues early on of people going to multiple entities receiving, and we're talking about faith-based as well as nonprofit organizations and so forth. So the idea was to make sure that we have a much more coordinated and you don't have, I guess, double, triple, quadruple dippers, if you will. People that will basically go from pot to pot to pot. By having one, one entity kind of coordinating this, it kind of brings in there. And I think you've been able to establish very clearly like, yeah, there's a lot of entities, a lot of money that's been, but now it's much more focused and be able to take these, assist them, but then get them to the necessary services.
Right.
Before, you were never assured that that was happening. You have a nonprofit or a faith church would give some assistance and then when they're off of it, after they've got that, they're going to the next charitable organization, but never going to the appropriate place to get the, either the health counseling, the mental health counseling, the addiction services, the job and family, any of that was never assured that you were getting that. This way, we're actually are making sure they are getting put into the appropriate level of public services necessary to get them out of that situation. And I think that's just
I appreciate you saying that Commissioner Hambley, because the wraparound case management services, that's what's critical. It's getting to the root cause of the challenge.
Yeah.
And our case managers, we borrow the phrase from our friends at Job and Family Services, everybody that we're serving gets an assignment, okay? And that assignment, that case plan has action steps that they have to take in order to continue to receive assistance. Of the 54 households that we've served, 16 heads of households have now secured employment here in Medina County, which is feeding a much-needed beast right now. As Stephen indicated earlier about how they're, you know, just hurting for folks, as are so many employers. So that's the wraparound services that Commissioner Hambley mentioned, that's the importance.
At one time, we didn't have that going on.
Right.
We didn't have that.
Right.
And fortunately for, you know, metropolitan housing as well as within the housing network, a higher level of collaboration and working together and make sure that we get people, there was no wrong door, I think that was the approach we took, no wrong door to get to that, but then they're basically making sure that they are directed or through our management program to the best resources to help them deal with their own underlying issues.
Yeah. And I'll close by this, and again, I'm sorry to take too much time. If it's that collaboration, like feeding Medina County, everybody we're serving, we're making sure that they're getting food that they can, and it's nutritious food that can either be heated up in the microwave in that hotel room or in a place where they rent or used, kept in a refrigerator. So once we take care of shelter and we take care of food and nutrition, now we can start working on the issues of security, so folks have that best opportunity to overcome their challenges.
And that, when you talk about that all-in approach and the collaboration, that's, when I talk about the return on investment, that's exactly
It's leverage.
Because we're, that door probably is a common entry point. If that's the, that's the biggest threat somebody faces, let's cross that one off the list and then go down the, down the list. So, no, I think, I think this is a, a problem, if you want to call it that, of, of good service, of providing good service, and that's why we're here and, and there's an additional need. So, you know, it's not unlike what we've talked about with transit and some of the other operations where the demographics of the county are changing. We're providing more of these services and there's a cost that's going to be associated with those things.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm, I'm supportive of, of being able to provide those additional funds. Well, I guess we'll have to have some conversation what the source of that money is. I know it would be technically qualified for ARPA, given the, who this money benefits and the criteria necessary to meet that, but obviously I think that's our next discussion.
That would be my first choice for it to be ARPA.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Skip.
Thanks, Skip. Okay, so next up, we are going to have a discussion on the brownfield demolition funding. Bethany, did you, are you coming up to talk about that or?
You sent a letter I
I don't know if you have any questions, I just
Well, we need to, because of the new Ohio budget that revolves state brownfield and building remediation programs. Yeah, come on in. Coming up, we need to designate an entity to help coordinate that. And of course, our Economic Development Corporation Port Authority slash Port Authority had been involved with a lot of this, so Bethany asked.
I think the, the initial program started in 2021, so we were able to get the, the Port Authority was able to get the lead entity designation by the county commissioners and the applications were due by the end of February the following year. So we, I think we put in applications for seven projects. We were ultimately awarded almost $900,000 from the state through the allocation. There was another private project that received another $3 million. So those programs have been very successful. We've seen, I think, five or six projects that are completed. I'm working on submitting the reimbursements for those. But in our conversations about brownfields with the developers over the past year, we're seeing more opportunity for other demolition projects, other brownfield redevelopment. One of the more successful projects was in Westfield Township where that received the highest grant that, that we were responsible for. That was torn down last year and, or the year before, and a new building is already up. So that was a new, brand-new 450,000 square foot industrial building that came out of leveraging the brownfield dollars that were available. So when the state approved the budget this past year, they approved another county set aside of $1 million for each county in the brownfields redevelopment and then another $500,000 in the building demolition program. And as I said, I do know that there's some significant projects right now that we could apply for if that funding were available. The industry experts are anticipating that those applications will probably go live January 1st. We'll have a short window to actually submit the applications. So it's going to take a couple of months for us to get the word out, accept applications, start reviewing them before the round opens, which means that we probably need to do the lead entity designation sooner rather than later.
As according to the law, actually, we make the recommendation and the director actually makes the selection based upon our, but given your, obviously your experience, and this is not, hey, we'll appoint her and they'll send her a check. She actually, there's a lot
A lot of work.
A lot of work involved, so, and they've, she's done such an excellent job and her staff have done an excellent job coordinating this, identifying those projects and actually pulling them through. Obviously, I'm very much interested in making sure that we continue your stewardship and involvement of the program.
That selection process, was that a change in the new law? Because the last time we just did, it looked like it was just a letter that went to
Yeah, I think that's, we just need to do the same thing.
We designate, we can just designate one, we're not required to do, to give them a list to choose from? That was the only thing that wasn't clear to me.
Well, I'm just, well, the, this was in the budget bill and it talks about select the lead entity from a list of recommendations made by the Board of County Commissioners of the county. I would presume a letter would be sufficient. We could do it by resolution.
But a list of one is okay?
Yeah, I don't think
Okay. That was the only thing that was not entirely clear to me.
And there is, there is a population threshold regarding whether you have a land reutilization program or a land bank or not, which actually, well, that's part of our future discussions as to whether that would make sense or not. But at this point, we definitely need to move forward, and I think designating the economic or Port Authority as the lead entity makes the most sense. And I'm presuming a letter is sufficient, if not, we can do, always do a resolution.
It was sufficient in the past and I always think a list of one is still a list.
That's true.
Yeah, I, yeah, it's, because they, they added from some very specific language that wasn't in place last time and that's what the underline says, so those were added intentionally. And my presumption is administratively, it's the same thing.
There may be other counties which have multiple agencies which have capabilities, so.
Or it also may depend upon how they, like a Cuyahoga County or elsewhere, how they want to divide it up. Some, in some areas are much more proficient, knowing what the needs are and as you say, there's others that, you know, that's what they do, so.
Yep, and it does, you're right, it does say the board shall submit a lead entity letter of intent and any other documentation required by the director, so yeah, that's perfect.
All right.
Thank you for handling that.
Absolutely, happy to help.
Excellent, thank you, thank you.
Okay, Steve, do you have anything?
No.
No?
Karen, do you have anything?
I do not.
Chris? Do we know when we're going back out to bid, what dates for EMA?
That is advertised as of today, actually.
As of today, excellent, okay.
There was no change in the scopes.
No significant change, other than moving EMA staff off-site temporarily during the construction period.
Did we take the 90 days out too?
It's 200 days of construction.
200, okay, good. And when are they due by?
The 28th at 2:00 PM.
Okay. All right, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
You're good.
Anybody else have anything else? Okay, and we have no executive session today, so.
Right, move to adjourn.
Second.
Roll.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Swettick?
Yes. Thank you all, we'll see you next week.
Thank you.